Good evening. Welcome to tonight's Municipal, Muskogee Municipal Authority Meeting, December 8th, 2025. If we would, let's stand for the invocation and flags alerts.
Dear Heavenly Father, as we enter this Christmas season, we pause to remember the true meaning of this time. We thank you for the gift of your Son, Jesus Christ. Lord, fill our hearts with gratitude and joy. Let your love shine through our words and actions. Bless our families, our friends, and our community. Heal those who are hurting, comfort those who are lonely, and provide for those in need. As we celebrate the birth of our Savior, renew our faith, strengthen our hope, and unite us in love, guide us into the new year with courage, wisdom, and a spirit of generosity. We thank you, Lord, for the blessings of this season and the promise of your unending love. May Christmas fill our hearts with peace, and our homes with joy, and our lives with purpose. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Attention. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next, the pledge to the Oklahoma flag.
I salute the flag of the state of Oklahoma. It signals the peace and harmony of all people.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
Item number one, please.
Consider approval of MMA minutes of November 24th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Motion to approve?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item number two, please.
Consider approval of MMA claims for all city departments for the month ending November 30th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Francis.
Thank you. Before you, the MMA claims for the month ending November 30th. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Move for approval?
I second it.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. This meeting is now adjourned. We will now call to order the Muskogee Redevelopment Authority, December 8th, 2025. Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Whoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Melody Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Here.
Item number one, please.
Consider approval of Muskogee Redevelopment Authority minutes of November 24th, 2025, or take other necessary action.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Number one, please. I'm sorry. The consent agendas, items one through four, does anyone want to pull those out or pay attention to any of those right now? Bring them to attention?
Move that we accept the consent agenda as printed.
Second. Okay. We have a motion and a second on the consent agenda. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Regular agenda, number five, please.
Hold a public hearing and discuss related action on two planned CBBG-DR 2022 applications for Meadows Stormwater Master Plan Study and the Meadows Housing Buyout Project, and take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now going to hold a public meeting. This public hearing, this public hearing is now open. Mr. Rigby?
Yes, so if you take your mind back to May of 2022, there was a weather event that caused some severe flooding across the city, most particularly in the Meadows subdivision off of Smith Ferry. The Oklahoma Department of Commerce opens a community development block grant occasionally. It's a grant that we've taken advantage of several times. This one is particularly for disaster recovery from that May 2022 flood event. So this public hearing is a checklist item that we have to have to be eligible for this grant, along with numerous other things that we've brought to council in the last couple of weeks. So this has two parts to it. There's two separate grants. Both of these require a 0% match from the city. We can contribute a voluntary match to make our application look more attractive, but that's not something we have to do. It's something we're choosing to do. The two grants that we're applying for is the Stormwater Master Plan Study. There's not enough money in the grant to go out there and do the physical work that it takes to correct all these issues, but there is enough money in that grant for us to get an engineer hired to come up with a plan to mitigate these flooding events in the future. And this would include things like redesign of the bridges so that access can be maintained throughout an event and cut back on the emergency rescue that our fire and police do out there. It would include a feasibility of dredging the creek to improve the flow, along with numerous other things to mitigate stormwater damage in an event like this, and hopefully to avoid them entirely, although we know that that's not always possible. The other thing would be a voluntary housing buyout and demolition project. So I want to emphasize the word voluntary. This is not something that anybody has to do or has to participate in, but it's an opportunity for us to extend that opportunity to the homeowners in particular parts of the Meadows. There is a criteria that these have to meet that if granted this, the Department of Commerce and the CBDG will tell us which houses are eligible. So it's not something that the city necessarily goes out and decides. It's a criteria-based selection. With that explanation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have we ever done one of these studies before? Has there been a study done out there before?
Not specifically for the Meadows. We have gotten partially through some master drainage plan things in the history of the city of Muskogee, none since I've been here, but none have been primarily solely focused on one subdivision like the Meadows.
I remember like 2008. Here, I'm talking about age again.
Dan? Would you mind if we closed this public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, we've had no one else sign up to speak. The public hearing is now closed. Okay.
Okay.
2008.
2008. I thought we did something back then. Maybe it just was the drainage ditch or something that goes along the backside of the Meadows or something. And I know that one time, I may be wrong, but one time they were talking about taking that pond and using it more as flood control and let, like, not keeping it full of water all the time, maybe more of a catch pond and let it slowly rain out. I don't know. Because the last time, I think 2020, I drove out there and then that flood, the water was cresting over that little pond because it was already full before that. I just, I don't know. I'm for it. I just was asking.
Yeah, I do believe they have done some mitigation work in the Meadows before, but not to this extent. That isn't a floodway and flood plain, so anything we do out there is going to require a significant amount of engineering to do.
Any other questions from council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Item passes. Regular agenda, number five, please.
Hold a public hearing and discuss related action on two planned CDBG-DR 2022 applications for Meadows Stormwater Master Plan Study and the Meadows Housing Buyout Project, and take other necessary action.
Okay, we are now going to hold a public meeting. This public hearing, this public hearing is now open. Mr. Rigby?
Yes, so if you take your mind back to May of 2022, there was a weather event that caused some severe flooding across the city, most particularly in the Meadows subdivision off of Smith Ferry. The Oklahoma Department of Commerce opens a community development block grant occasionally. It's a grant that we've taken advantage of several times. This one is particularly for disaster recovery from that May 2022 flood event. So this public hearing is a checklist item that we have to have to be eligible for this grant, along with numerous other things that we've brought to council in the last couple of weeks. So this has two parts to it. There's two separate grants. Both of these require a 0% match from the city. We can contribute a voluntary match to make our application look more attractive, but that's not something we have to do. It's something we're choosing to do. The two grants that we're applying for is the Stormwater Master Plan Study. There's not enough money in the grant to go out there and do the physical work that it takes to correct all these issues, but there is enough money in that grant for us to get an engineer hired to come up with a plan to mitigate these flooding events in the future. And this would include things like redesign of the bridges so that access can be maintained throughout an event and cut back on the emergency rescue that our fire and police do out there. It would include a feasibility of dredging the creek to improve the flow, along with numerous other things to mitigate stormwater damage in an event like this, and hopefully to avoid them entirely, although we know that that's not always possible. The other thing would be a voluntary housing buyout and demolition project. So I want to emphasize the word voluntary. This is not something that anybody has to do or has to participate in, but it's an opportunity for us to extend that opportunity to the homeowners in particular parts of the Meadows. There is a criteria that these have to meet that if granted this, the Department of Commerce and the CBDG will tell us which houses are eligible. So it's not something that the city necessarily goes out and decides. It's a criteria-based selection. With that explanation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Have we ever done one of these studies before? Has there been a study done out there before?
Not specifically for the Meadows. We have gotten partially through some master drainage plan things in the history of the city of Muskogee, none since I've been here, but none have been primarily solely focused on one subdivision like the Meadows.
I remember like 2008. Here, I'm talking about my age again.
Dan? Would you mind if we closed this public hearing?
Okay.
Okay, we've had no one else sign up to speak. The public hearing is now closed. Okay.
Okay.
2008.
2008. I thought we did something back then. Maybe it just was the drainage ditch or something that goes along the backside of the Meadows or something. And I know that one time, I may be wrong, but one time they were talking about taking that pond and using it more as flood control and let, like, not keeping it full of water all the time, maybe more of a catch pond and let it slowly rain out. I don't know. Because the last time, I think 2020, I drove out there and then that flood, the water was cresting over that little pond because it was already full before that. I just, I don't know. I'm for it. I just was asking.
Yeah, I do believe they have done some mitigation work in the Meadows before, but not to this extent. That isn't a floodway and flood plain, so anything we do out there is going to require a significant amount of engineering to do.
Any other questions from council?
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Motion passes. Item number six.
Consider approval of Resolution Number 3064, a land use amendment request, to allow for the rezone of property located at 4801 West Oak Mulgy Street, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Ms. Sarah Winkle?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. The applicants have decided to withdraw their application, so no further action is necessary.
Okay, we'll move on to item number seven.
Consider approval of Ordinance Number 4281A, a request to rezone property located at 4801 West Oak Mulgy Street, rezoning the property from C1 Local Commercial to R5 Mobile Home, and if approved, authorize staff to update the official zoning map of the city or take other necessary action.
Ms. Winkle, please.
Yes, so same situation. They have decided to withdraw that application, so there is no further action that's required.
Thank you. No further action. Item number eight.
Discuss and consider approval of Resolution Number 3070, or provide further direction to staff regarding the creation of a tourism grant advisory committee to make recommendations to staff for the award of individual tourism grants up to $5,000 for local tourism events from hotel-motel tax dollars, or take other necessary action.
Mr. Justin O'Neill?
Yes, so this establishes the Tourism Grant Advisory Committee that will meet on a monthly basis to review any applications that come in for tourism support. These specific grants are allowed for people to apply for up to $5,000. Larger awards can be done at a council level and a city manager level. These just are up to 5,000, though. Who would sit on this board is three ex-officio members, which would be myself as tourism director exposition, the economic development director, president of Muskogee Chamber of Commerce, and then seven voting members. There'll be two members of the hotel and lodging industry, one member of a financial institution, one member of a local tourism attraction, one member who are citizens of the city of Muskogee, and then one member of the Muskogee City Council. These will award a set aside amount, which is determined by city council chair in the budget.
Taking any questions?
What did you come up with a number of 5,000? Where did that number come from?
It's been 5,000 as long as I've been around, and that's just a good amount for any event, really. On a larger scale, like we said, there's still funds available should it warrant a larger event. It would just take more than this packet of, than this application process.
So will your board be able to, will it all go before the board and then come to us? Is that how that'll work? Or will it go from y'all, from the board, to the city manager, to us?
At 5,000, it will go to the city manager. Over 50,000 for things like the VAS tournament, things like that, that would come to this body.
So this 5,000 wouldn't have to come?
Yeah, it wouldn't have to come every time.
And that's a normal, good amount that they've done in the past.
Yeah, but from 5,000 to 50,000, would the advisory board review those and approve those events?
So would I, anyone that's looking to apply for tourism grants, I start them with this packet, even if they're asking more than that, and then I take the proper channels above that.
I would like to see the advisory committee review all the grants and kind of, and to see if they're, what their thoughts are on the events, even from 5,000 to 50,000.
Yeah, I mean, that's, they're all coming through that system, and that's a good way to say, you know, is this something we want to look forward into?
Right.
And make a larger investment in?
Right.
I think that's a good start.
Yeah, so maybe edit some of this to, where it's talking about just them approving $5,000.
Yeah, that's okay.
But other than that, I think it looks great.
How long would each member sit on this?
So it does break them all down. I don't remember off the top of my head, but the initial, the initial terms are two and three years, just stagger them out, correct?
Correct.
And then it will be a more formal two-year term after that.
So just a couple of points, just one point of clarification. Are we approving how much to put into this grant fund? Because it says as a, it's an aligned item budget, the grant amount. Are we going to approve how much in grants we're going to allow?
Not tonight.
No, in the future?
In the future, yes.
In the future, okay. Then next, I see where we have the terms of these off. So we got a lot on these two or three terms to stagger, but why are we limiting like two hotels, one banker, financial institution? I mean, why are we doing that? Because to me, you're setting up for some potential of conflict of interest, especially if you have someone with a tourism attraction looking at grants, it's going to be coming in and competing and stuff. You're talking about public money. And why are we saying we're not just going to do citizens with hotel-motel possibly come in as more of as an advisory position, or somebody else coming in as an advisory position?
Yeah, that's a good direction this is from.
How, would you add a few more members of the hotel-motel people?
Well, no, I think that they can have some representation there. I think most of the hotel-motel people, I don't know if anyone lived here locally, one, but I just see they're setting up some potential conflicts there. I don't see why we can't do just some members of the community and possibly, you know, I think we really need to review this paragraph here and have more members of the community. And then those positions of like hotel-motel or a tourist attraction, as they kind of be more as an advisory position, not necessarily, yeah, not necessarily a voting member to be able to disperse money, because, I mean, I can just see some issues with that. I mean, that's just kind of my opinion on looking at this. So I'm going to have to like, ten, ten citizens positions. Right now, it's just written as two citizens, and then the rest are either have to be in the hotel-motel industry or the financial institution.
Well, if you can find someone from the financial institution, then you're like, can't put anybody on there. That's why I think.
It does put some.
A banker's got plenty of time.
Some hurdles, but, yeah.
Do you take a look at that and present something later in the future?
Yeah. This is based off those early meetings of how this.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, that's my concern looking at this final deal. I like everything. I like what they said about the other grants coming through and getting reviewed, and even the bigger grants, then, like, we recommend this coming to this body moving forward. I do like those items, so.
Yeah.
The only deal, I just, members of the committee.
Yeah, we'll take it back.
Mr. Mira, can I make the motion that we table this item and reconvene this conversation in January when we return, so we can iron out these issues that have been brought before us tonight?
I second.
Motion and a second.
Hold on, we need to act today. Are we bringing it back to Public Works and Finance or to council?
I'm going to bring it back to Public Works first.
So it'd be, we're going to table it until January the 12th of 2026.
That would be my motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on table until January the 12th. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melody Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Whoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Cale.
Yes. Number nine, please.
Receive a reward and updates from the Muskogee Medical Center Authority regarding the financials, status, and future of the authority, and take other necessary action.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. I'm honored to stand tonight, well, sit tonight, to present a great group of people that I've had the honor of working with over the last couple of years. I refer to them as the guardians of healthcare for our community, a great group of people who have celebrated a great accomplishment on this week, as we all were there when they opened the doors and broke the ribbon, cut the ribbon at the new St. Francis Hospital, opening future doors for better healthcare in the city of Muskogee that have always been our passion and always been our goal. Tonight, we come to address the elephant in the room. It's always been somewhat a conversation that once we make it to this point where the hospital is built, where do we go from here? And my medical authority family is here tonight to not ask for any action tonight, but ask for your consideration of what we feel would be a great path forward. We work hard to get to the point where we have brought a new 125-bed tower to the city of Muskogee, but we feel that there are still needs in our community. And so I want to introduce my medical authority family. If you guys would please stand. We have our chair lady, Ms. Evelyn Hibbs, Dr. Fred Reefer, Ms. Ann Hong, Mr. Wayne Whitburn, and our new kid on the block, Dr. Holder, who's with us. And also, I want to acknowledge on the front row here, Dr. Roger L. B. Cutler. We have all worked together over the last couple of years to get to where we are today. But once again, the elephant in the room is where do we go from here? Many, many, many people may say, you know, our job is done, but until we all take healthcare seriously in our community and our nation, we feel like we still have work to do. I have two people that's going to speak on behalf of the authority tonight. I have Ms. Ann Hong and Pastor Roger Cutler. So at this time, I'll call them up, and they can make their statements, and I'll come back with closing comments. Whichever one of you guys want to go first.
More than half a century ago, a group of Muskogee citizens decided that our community needed a medical authority to provide for the healthcare needs of its residents. The city council approves those appointments to that board, and you've met some of us tonight here. The Muskogee City Council created the Muskogee Medical Center Authority through a trust indenture on December 12th, 1966. The document set out in great detail the mission and goals of the authority and the duties and responsibilities of the trustees. From a thorough reading of this document, one must conclude that the creators of this trust intended it to determine, look after, and provide for the medical and healthcare needs of this community. Throughout the years, the authority has played a critical role in maintaining the standard of care, responding to the healthcare infrastructure needs, and adjusting to reflect the changes in healthcare as it affected the needs of the community. The most immediate and long-term action of the authority was to secure the Muskogee General Hospital, which evolved into Muskogee Regional Medical Center, which was leased to Capella
cost of care. Muskogee Medical Center Authority still has work to do. Derek's right. We have several segments of our population who may benefit from the experience and the attention of the Muskogee Medical Center Authority. Muskogee has a large population of veterans, approximately 9% of our population. Most of us are aware that the Jack C. Montgomery Medical Facility on the Hill is being transformed to provide mental health services to veterans and that the physical healthcare services will be transferred to Tulsa instead of Muskogee. When that happens, it will create an additional burden on our healthcare system and on those veterans. While Muskogee does have a portion of the population who have health insurance and can afford the out-of-pocket expenses on their own, many, maybe even most of us cannot do that. Generally speaking, poor people have poor health and poor healthcare. Muskogee has a high poverty rate, about 25%. About 37% of those in poverty are children. As for insurance, 25.2% are on Medicaid and 13% on Medicare. Only about 32% of our population is covered by health insurance at work. And 15% have no coverage at all. Many of those are among the working poor. They have jobs with low-paying wages and no health insurance coverage. A large segment of our population also faces social and cultural barriers to funding healthcare. Represented among these are black and Hispanic males who are at greater risk for hypertension, heart disease, stroke, gastric problems, and various cancers. Females of all ethnic and socioeconomic groups are at high risk for injuries of domestic violence, sexual abuse, and complications of pregnancy and childbirth. In addition to, all of these populations also suffer from the same ailments the rest of us do, colds and flu and allergies. We're all subject to those complaints. At this juncture, we propose that the best way to help this, at this juncture, we propose that the best way to continue our mission is to assist local charitable organizations that have been struggling to meet the needs of people who have limited access to healthcare. In particular, we propose to offer our assistance to the Good Shepherd Clinic of Muskogee, which already has an organization and a system of delivery in place. We also envision working with other organizations to provide some screening clinics, some resource-funding workshops, and perhaps medical literacy in safe environments and socially inviting locations. As the landscape of healthcare continues to evolve and change, we do not know what changes will be wrought by insurance companies, federal and state agencies, and even by the availability of medical personnel. Muskogee Medical Center Authority was created to help find those solutions to those situations. We celebrate the advances that have been made, and we value highly our relationship with St. Francis Hospital. In the wake of these advancements, the question has arisen in some quarters as to the necessity of maintaining the Muskogee Medical Center Authority. It is clear that the Muskogee City Council, which created the trust indenture, and every city council since, has agreed that the Muskogee Medical Center Authority is an essential service to the community and that its purpose is to provide for the healthcare needs and that its resources are not intended to be an emergency fund that can be diverted to purposes other than healthcare. We hope this council will consider the history of this service and this authority and will retain it in its original purpose for the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Thank you. Pastor Roger Cutler's going to come at this time. He's a former member of our medical authority, and he also now works with the Muskogee County Health Department.
Good evening, City Council, community members, partners, and friends. Thank you for providing this opportunity for us to discuss something that is essential to the future of our city, preserving strong, accessible healthcare for every person in Muskogee. At the heart of this effort stands the Muskogee Medical Center Authority, an organization that has quietly but powerfully shaped the well-being of our community for many years. The Muskogee Medical Center Authority is more than just an administrative body. They serve as the guardians of healthcare in Muskogee, protecting resources, strengthening systems, and ensuring that our citizens can rely on stable, responsive, and accessible networks of care. Continuing this authority as a trust ensures that our focus remains on long-term outcomes, not short-term pressures or political cycles. We've already witnessed what happens when healthcare is brought directly into the community. The Muskogee County Health Department's off-site mobile clinic that was hosted at the Dr. Martin Luther King Center, and we thank Deputy Mayor Reed for opening the doors there, it is a shining example of what intentional neighborhood-based care can accomplish. When the Health Department helped host our wellness clinics there, the building quickly became a true community hub, open, welcoming, and deeply impactful. The result speaks for themselves. In just three years, more than 11,000 citizens, yes, I said 11,000 citizens, received services through this clinic. That was at the height of the bad word that many of us don't want to repeat, but it was COVID. And our citizens were able to receive the needed services that they need. That number represents lives touched, early detection made, chronic conditions managed, and families who receive quality care right where they live. And what made this clinic so powerful is its inclusiveness. It served every socioeconomic group in Muskogee, from homeless neighbors walking in for help to affluent residents driving up in a Mercedes-Benz. Yeah, we had some Mercedes-Benz clients that came as well. Under that roof, everyone received the same dignity, the same access, and the same level of care. That is the power of a community clinic rooted in compassion and purpose. Recent events in our nation also remind us that why this work is so crucial. During the recent government shutdown, we saw how quickly families, through no fault of their own, could find themselves without a paycheck and without resources to pay for basic healthcare. In moments like that, the fear of becoming sick can be overwhelming, but having a clinic open daily right in the community, it would help reduce that panic, provides a sense of stability, and assurance that care is available, accessible, and dependable, even in times of crisis. Imagine expanding that kind of safety net. Imagine the Muskogee Medical Center Authority continuing to establish and fund clinics like the Good Shepherd, the Martin Luther King Center Wellness Clinics, places where care is not just convenient, but it's constant, places that lift burdens, places that calm fears, and strengthen the long-term health of our city. Continuing the Muskogee Medical Center Authority has, as a trust, provides the stability, vision, and the community-centered mission needed to make this possible. It helps us stay proactive instead of reactive, narrowing access and ensuring that every resident, regardless of income, regardless of circumstances, regardless of crisis, has access to quality healthcare. Healthcare is not a luxury. It is a foundation for strong families, thriving children, and a healthy workforce. When we invest in wellness, we invest in the future of Muskogee. And the Muskogee Medical Center Authority remains one of the most effective tools that we have to carry that investment forward. I was so honored to be a part of that group that helped bring St. Francis here, and we're so grateful that St. Francis is a part of this community. So today, as a community leader, as a public health practitioner, and a former board member, I stand firmly in support of continuing the Medical Center Authority as a trust, not for the sake of the institution itself, but for the people it protects, our elders, our working families, our underserved neighbors, and every resident who calls this city home. Let us preserve this structure and strengthen our healthcare system. Let us choose the path that future generations will remember with gratitude, and let us continue moving forward with courage, compassion, and unwavering commitment to wellness in the city of Muskogee. Thank you.
Thank you. So that's our presentation, guys. Our hearts are in continuing the work of the Muskogee Medical Authority. Our health is our wealth. If I could say it like this, we got to take care, we got to take care of our bodies because we got to live in them the rest of our lives, right? And so, with that being the case, we want to be there, and we want to be that arm that helps those who have a fear, oh, I owe a bill, I'm not going back to that hospital because I owe a bill, can't afford to live. We want to be that neighbor, we want to be that Good Shepherd clinic that assists our citizens in living long. Thank you for your time, and that is our presentation.
All right, thank you. I didn't realize it was open, but it started back in December 12 of 1966. I thought it was something that started at the, when they did the contract with E-Star and all that. Has it been going, has it been financed through, how's it been financed since 1966?
Does anyone know that history?
It's been self-sold.
It's been self? Okay.
I think originally, Mr. Hall, the, the Capella Hospital was here, there was some deal worked out then, and the original funds that went into the board were from that.
Okay.
The Muskogee Foundation.
The City of Muskogee Foundation. No, not their foundation, the City of Muskogee Foundation.
Okay, I might have confused. I know there was, there was something that was done that created, that I believe the city funded the trust originally.
At the original trust indenture creation, it provides in that document that the trustees are endowed, are endowed with the authority to raise funds, and they did raise funds to build the worst hospital. And then the money was, I think they even had a loan and raised funds to pay. A bond issue, it was a bond issue, actually. And then, since, since that time, the Medical Center Authority has managed the money that was raised for that and the money that came through the lease and all that was, that and the city agreed on how that money would be distributed. And so, we have, we as stewards of that, of those resources, have invested and earned additional monies on that, that original investment.
I guess it is kind of exciting to know that they did develop this authority in 1966. That's a great year. That's the year Dr. Matthews brought me into the world. Fifty-nine years of this authority, that's, that's a strong authority.
And so, let me make sure that I'm clear, because this is campaign season.
I'm not running.
No, I'm just saying, I'm making this clear. This is the Medical Center, this is the Medical Authority. This is not the City of Muskogee Foundation. And then there's a medical foundation as well. We're speaking on behalf of the Muskogee Medical Center Authority.
Our mission is to ensure that the citizens of Muskogee have appropriate healthcare. That's our mission.
Not one to ruffle any feathers, but there's just a few things that I just want to say. Couple of things is that we redid some board appointments and we changed how your board terms under the impression, because of the St. Francis being built and after it's built, this was going to happen. And so, we made a lot of decisions on that. Are you guys looking at how to redo those board appointments? Because we have some people who don't live in the city anymore that's on the board. We have people that extended another like seven years out. Is there something that's been brought up within your board? No?
There's an issue for us.
Well, I'm just saying, there's some things that we did with that, that whenever we made some reappointments, that we basically made those reappointments just to kind of keep people on the board at that point because of the changes, because of St. Francis was coming on. And then, we were led under the impression that once St. Francis kind of happened like this and this and this would, would happen. And I agree with everything that you said. I think the Muskogee, I think that it needs to be there. I think it does. It's a very big part of this community. It's been some great points. But we did, we did do that. And so, I don't know if there's something that, I would like for you guys to look and see kind of some of those members that were extended terms, because there's other physicians and there's other people in the community that may want to serve on that board as well. And then also, I'd like to see kind of just some more recruit, help recruiting independent physicians to the community too. St. Francis is great, but we need more independent practices coming in. Dr. Reefer and Dr. Holder know that we need those independent practices, so I'd like to see kind of some extension of that. But appreciate what you guys do, but I would like to look at how we did some of those appointments because we did, we did do that.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. Out of number 10.
Consider approval to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a performance contract with Dreambound Enterprises, Jody Messina, in the amount of $70,000 plus incidentals for a concert at the Muskogee Civic Center on March 28, 2026, or take other necessary
Mr. Justin O'Neil.
So this is something we've talked about once before, and then we are bringing it back. This is a proposed concert that would be in March of 2026. The talent cost is $60,000, but the overall cost, sorry?
The talent cost is $70,000.
$70,000. But the overall estimated expenditures on this contract are $104,000. With that, it is extremely padded in the, what my expenses are, because it goes into the talent purchasing.
I need to point out that the actual contract amount with incidentals states $104,300. And you want to talk about the insurance policies?
So Katrina has pointed out that they're requesting additional insurance policies. This has not been something that we've dealt with on any contract before, and I think...
Did you bring your pro forma sheets with you?
I have some of them here.
I know we talked about having those tonight.
What's the deal on the insurance?
The contract requires us to carry two different types of insurance policies, one for I think $3 million and one for $5 million for personal injury and property damage. We don't know what the cost of those are going to be to the city. We're going to try striking through that, negotiating that to see if we can remove those. They also actually have a clause there that says anything over $70,000, they get 50% of the ticket sales, so we're striking that also, that provision.
I guess those are new details that we just came across.
It should be anything over our, it's not over the $70,000, it's anything over our projected revenue that we've disclosed to them, that we've, this is what we say to make on it, anything over that, or anything that we say, we tell them that a seat is going to be worth $25, but then we really sell it for $80,000. Then they're, then they would get half that money because we...
Like we're striking that out?
Wrong part.
Is that something, is that something new? Because I don't remember talking about that.
Well, this is...
It's just part of their contract negotiation. It's standard for industry contracts for them to pad.
They're just going to make sure you don't lowball them and...
Yeah, so you don't lowball them and then, and then sell tickets for double the amount, then you're making way more than they are. So what you do is you give an example, so just like my pro forma, I would give them the same thing, but they're broken down. Here's how many tickets at this price, here's how many tickets at this price, here's our expenses on staffing, here's our expenses on marketing, and we, we're inflating those to what is the maximum amount that we will spend on that. Based on that, then they say yes or no, we'll accept your offer of $70,000, we'll deny your offer at $70,000. So those are what these expenses are. Should we give them one number and inflate it and tell, you know, we make a million dollars off of it, and they're going to be like, hey, you owe us half that million dollars.
The actual contract we're signing is $104,000, it's not $70,000, because those things that could change, or those...
Yes, those things will change, like, within that $104,000, I have $10,000 in marketing. We've yet to spend $10,000 in marketing. We've yet to spend $100 in marketing for this show, and we've already sold 700 and some odd tickets. We have $8,000 for staffing. I've never paid $8,000 for staffing, but if we were at full capacity and needed additional staffing, parking, things like that, it could hit $8,000. Ground transportation, $300, we use a parts van, so that, we don't need that. If we were to need to rent an additional vehicle or things like that, that's where that money comes in. So a lot of this is worst-case scenario marketing, or budgeting that we don't.
It's things you might have to do because it's even bigger than you thought.
Yeah, this is, this is all worst-case scenario.
You've already sold over 700 tickets.
Sold 712 the last time I checked today, which is over $32,000 in tickets.
Did ticket sales pick up after the last meeting? Because I saw a lot of...
Yeah, I sold 10... Yeah, I sold ten during my presentation last month.
Great job, good job, Justin.
We have seen a good uptick, because there's been over sixty sales since last Monday, which is, is good for, you know, this far out. As we ramp up, our marketing push right now is selling tickets to the Civic Center for Christmas gifts. And then, we go right into the nineties country event, which has over a thousand tickets at it. And that'll be, you know, a thousand people, you can almost guarantee, are going to be at the Jody Messina Show. Then we go right into four thousand people at the rodeo. It's got to be a right there where... This is, I'm not, nothing's a sure thing, but this is a very educated estimate on a success.
And I will point out one more thing in the contract, which I've marked up and sent to you, Justin. They have their talent cost at seventy-five thousand dollars in the subsection. It says seventy.
That includes the opener, which is at five thousand.
Okay.
Who's the opener?
It's an Oklahoma artist, so one of our missions has been to, when we have a national headliner, have a local artist as that opener, so that we're giving exposure to local artists on a stage that they wouldn't normally do. This opener is named Holly Beth. She's from Stroud, and has a great following on her own. Red dirt, country, rock, going to be a great fixture with that artist.
So, how many tickets will we have to sell in order to reach, I mean, I guess, you know, just break even?
Our breaking point is under two thousand people. At our, at two events this year, we've already crossed that threshold. At Shane and Dole, which is most likely compromiseable to this one, we had twenty-six hundred. At that show, we profited over twenty-five thousand. We estimate the economic impact to be over three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, yeah, our restaurants and our hotels.
And that's, and that's what I think is that we've got to keep in mind, is that all this place is going to be full. That economic impact is something that the city is doing to help, you know, some of our people's community. But I, I like it. I move for approval.
I second it.
We have a motion and a second roll call, please.
And if I can, actually, if I can ask them to make a motion to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute the agreement?
As, as amended.
As amended, yeah.
Thank you.
Still think it's a great, a great thing for our town.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
No.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item passes. Number eleven, please.
Hold a discussion relating to the creation of specific zoning designations within ordinances for zoning tiny homes, RV parks, and mobile home parks in the city of Muskogee, and provide direction to staff, or take other necessary action.
Councilor Dan Hall.
Katrina. No. This item started out probably just a little before your agenda item got on the swing. After talking to several people in our community, and going over our, our building codes and everything else, we bunched our tiny homes, our mobile homes, and our RV parks all as one. And what I talked to Katrina about is maybe developing something to divide those out and break them up, and set codes for each one of those. And even if we even want to have some of these allowed in our city, I wanted to bring it before the city council, to have the, the staff to look over some items, and see how y'all feel about it, to see if we even, we'd like to have an RV park in our town. And go from there, and see how y'all feel about it, and that way, we can have the city council to look in. I mean, the city employees develop a ordinance or something, and guide us down this road. But it needs to be from all of us, not just one of us.
I think it's worth looking into, and just to breaking, breaking that out. I think that would, it would be better to have separate.
Wonder if we've had, have we had anyone try to contact us about doing tiny homes?
So, in, in anticipation of this item, I'd asked Sarah and Brent to be prepared to speak. So, there is some work that we have been doing prior to all of this coming up. Speaks to, speaks to Councilor Hall's item, so I'm going to ask Sarah to kind of explain some of the work that they've been doing, answer Counselor Flynnery's question about tiny homes and things like that.
So, we have gotten several calls about just where tiny homes can go, because there's nothing in our ordinance as of right now. It's kind of blown up, as you guys know, overnight. There's a lot of people looking for this solution. So, this is something we started working on a while ago. And we've actually already looked at breaking out the R5 into tiny homes, mobile homes, and RVs into three different sections, because as we all know, R5 is very muddy. It's, it's very blurry. And so, we've been working on the bulk and yard standards, and what those lots should look like. Right now, our buildable lot size is seventy-two hundred square feet, which for a tiny home is astronomical. So, we need to look at what we want a lot size to be that would be conducive to fit a tiny home. And there's also some standards in the IRC where tiny homes are only talked about within the appendices of the IRC. And if you look at the size requirements on a tiny home, and then you go to do the inspections on those, they don't quite meet, and wouldn't pass what our inspections would be. So, then as a city, we need to look at what do we want to define square footage on a tiny home to be. And in talking with Brent, and just my crew upstairs, we have looked at seven hundred square feet, four hundred to seven hundred square feet as being what would be conducive for a tiny home. That would pass code, it would pass inspections, and things like that. So, we've been working on this. It's a huge moving piece. And the other things that we have to consider is where in Muskogee do you want this zoning to be? Because now, we've got to look at our comprehensive plan map, and figure out, okay, what areas would you guys like these in? We want to make sure that property values are maintained in areas, and that it's conducive for the area that's going to go in. And it's definitely something that we've been looking at. We are very open to any suggestions, any guidance that you guys have. But it's definitely not something that's an overnight. It's, it's, we need some guidance on how you guys would like to see this developed, and we can certainly sit down with what we have already looked at as well.
Have most of the calls you've gotten, have they been from individuals wanting to do a tiny home? Not anyone wanting to do a tiny home, like subdivision?
So, some of the calls that we have gotten are in regard to tiny home communities. But then, we also, I'm sure everybody's, you know, fully aware of HDTV. You've got people that want to buy these sheds and turn them into tiny homes, and it just, it doesn't work. And it won't pass code, it won't meet standards. So, there's, there's a lot of different things that we need to look at to try to address the needs of the community, and what we can actually do for this.
These are going to be built, like, my understanding is stick-built homes.
Yes.
Just, just like a home. And I just happen to know that they have been working on this for a few months. They identified the problem themselves, and so they have been working on it, and I thank you for that. Have you looked at house plans on tiny homes? Have you inspected various house plans to see what, three hundred, four hundred, five hundred square feet get you?
So, I do know that my counterpart, Brent, has looked at a lot of that. That is something that he's been very well versed in. He's talked to different builders. We've looked at different municipalities to see how they're doing it. And there's a lot of different things that we're looking at this, where there's no need to reinvent the wheel when other communities are doing it. So, we're trying to see how they're doing it, and pay visits to those, and see, you know, what they're putting together for this. Because it's not just a Muskogee thing, you know, it's blowing up everywhere. So, we're trying to see what we can do, and how we can best address this, to make sure that it meets the safety standards that we require, as well as is conducive for the developers in the community.
Sounds like you guys are off to a great start.
We're trying.
Well, and one of my biggest concerns is, is that I don't want us to downgrade tiny... I've been to a community in Colorado, where they had a, they had a side, a place set aside, where they built tiny homes. It was a great little community. It was nice. But the street, they had streets, they had curbs, they had guttering, they had drainage. I mean, it looked like a regular city neighborhood with curbing and guttering and everything. I think if we're going to move our city forward, we can't take a step back and allow gravel roads. We can't take a back road, slip, and put gravel driveways in. We're going, we need to do what other communities are doing, that are taking those steps forward to develop our community. I will never, as a city councilman, vote yes on any agenda item you bring up here that has a gravel road attached to it. They tried to have this annexed guy place in out here southwest of Muskogee a few years ago, and I couldn't believe that we were actually even considering it. A lot of times, builders will build houses, and expect the city to come in and build the streets, and the guttering, and the drainage, and everything. And that's not fair to our workers on the back end, and it's not fair to us as a city trying to grow. I'm not opposed to tiny homes. I think that there's a place for them. I'm not opposed to housing additions. I really love those. I just do not think, inside of our city limits, where houses should be built, we should allow RVs to be built, ever. I think that we should figure out what areas that we're going to put those in, and then they need to be to a standard that we demand, not that we accept. And that's where I'm at on that. And I know that this agenda item takes more than an hour pre-order work through, because y'all have been on this for several months. And, and that's why we're here tonight, to let y'all have that leeway and get a direction from us.
Okay, do we need, is, do we take action on this?
Yes, we need a motion to direct staff.
Move for approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to direct staff. Roll call, please.
What do you, can I clarify, what are you directing staff?
To a, a ordinance or a plan?
Specific zoning designations with ordinances for zoning tiny homes, et cetera, et cetera.
Yes.
So, it's not all bunched together?
Separate ones for each. Maybe have the communication launches after the first of the year to...
Let's see what staff's come up with. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes. Number twelve.
Consider approval of the appointment of Cynthia Kennedy to the Board of Adjustment to serve a three-year term, filling the expired term of Stacy Alexander, beginning January one, 2026, and ending December thirty-one, 2029, or take other necessary action.
Counselor Melanie Cranford.
Yes, this is my item tonight. I think that Cynthia Kennedy would be a great asset to this Board of Adjustments. She is very active in our community. She works for Muskogee Abstract and Title Company, and I think that she has the knowledge that we need on this board. And I recommend...
A second motion.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes. Number thirteen, please.
Nope, we don't have any signed up. Thirteen. Consider an executive session to discuss the following. A, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11), Title 25, consider convening an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to the expenditure of public funds and for purposes of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. B, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss workers' compensation claim, number 10-25-18, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. C, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the pending tort claim, CA-18-2025, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. D, pursuant to Section 307(b)(1), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of city manager Kendall Francis, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. E, pursuant to Section 307(b)(1), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of city attorney Katrina Bodenhammer, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session. F, pursuant to Section 307(b)(1), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes, consider convening an executive session to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of city clerk Tammy L. Tracy, and if necessary, take appropriate action and open session.
We need a motion to go into executive session, please.
Can you go into executive session?
Okay, change that.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
We need to wait for them to get back.
I have a motion, please, to return to regular session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Back in regular session.
And a roll call.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Here.
Jamie Stout.
Here.
Tracy Hoos.
Here.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Here.
Melanie Cranford.
Here.
Dan Hall.
Here.
Tom Martindale.
Here.
Mike Brawley.
Okay, Ms. Bodenhammer, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item thirteen A, pursuant to Section 307(c)(11), Title 25. Council did convene an executive session to confer on matters pertaining to the expenditure of public funds and for the purposes of conferring on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property. An appropriate motion would be to direct staff to prepare the documents for transfer as discussed in executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Upstate.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item thirteen B, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss the workers' compensation claim, number 10-25-18. An appropriate motion would be to either approve or deny the settlement as discussed in executive session.
Approve as discussed.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes. Item passes.
Item thirteen C, pursuant to Section 307(b)(4), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss the pending tort claim, CA-18-2025. An appropriate motion would be to either approve or deny the settlement of the tort claim as discussed in executive session.
Approve as discussed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mike Brawley.
Yes.
Tom Martindale.
Yes.
Dan Hall.
Yes.
Melanie Cranford.
Yes.
Shirley Hilton Flannery.
Yes.
Tracy Hoos.
Yes.
Jamie Stout.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Derek Reed.
Yes.
Mayor Patrick Kell.
Yes.
Item passes.
Thirteen D, pursuant to Section 307(b)(1), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of city manager Kendall Francis, and there is no action required on this item.
Thank you.
Item thirteen E, pursuant to Section 307(b)(1), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of city attorney Katrina Bodenhammer, and there is no action required on this item.
Thank you.
Item thirteen F, pursuant to Section 307(b)(1), Title 25, Oklahoma statutes. Council did convene an executive session to discuss the employment, hiring, appointment, promotion, demotion, disciplining, or resignation of city clerk Tammy Tracy, and there is no action required on this item.
Thank you, Ms. Bodenhammer.
You're welcome.
We are now adjourned.
Thank you.